August eight, August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six P M. Regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. We had called it order. Let's start with word prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive others trespass against us. Lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is King and power and glory forever. Amen. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Approval of agenda on the appearances we need to add, Mr. William Smith. Any other additions?
He's down there. He's down there at the tax assessment contract.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Approval of minutes. Anyone see anything? Anything that looked right? Addition, deletions? If not, we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Motion carried. Approval of financial reports. Any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve. Second. All in favor? Motion carried. Taxes and appearances none. Old business, elections, update, attorney.
My understanding was you weren't my legal opinion on that law ordeal. Didn't change a whole lot after reading those ninety pages that they had anyways, but my take is that I don't know why, as a county, you would open yourself up to a lawsuit like that when the state has their regulations. What they want you to do, my thing is if a certain party, whether that's the Republican Party or any other party, if they want to get in a lawsuit so bad at the state, they can bring one against the state for those reasons. I don't know why we would open ourselves up to that liability, be their gateway in. As to the specifics between the electronic voting and the paper voting, I think you can have just as many issues with paper voting. I just don't think there's a perfect way to do it. My advice from a legal standpoint would be whatever the state is authorizing, that's what I would do.
I spoke with a person by the name of Josh Black of the Secretary of State. And he said that Athens Park County had tried this back two or three years ago. And the state stepped in. They find each commissioner, each one on the voting board, the whole nine yards, anybody had any kind of involvement in it. They charged them five hundred dollars per ballot cast.
I didn't find that in my research, but that just furthers my decision on it.
So, you know, there's nothing we can do, you know. You just have to follow the laws and that's it. Anything else, Mr. Attorney? Okay, fueling station report, pages twelve through thirteen.
So, as if you look at it, it just shows that we've increased the volume that we're providing to the city and the hospital. The school board did finally pick up their cards and has signed the agreement, so they have also, have you said?
They said they're starting today.
Okay, so they were starting to fuel today, so we're gonna probably have to kind of monitor that a lot closely and possibly go ahead and start buying some more fuel.
And that's on-road diesel mostly?
Well, now, there's some of their new buses.
Are gas.
Are gas.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, U T V registration ordinance draft, pages fourteen through sixteen.
And that's the thing that Layton brought to you guys a couple meetings ago. We had an issue with ATV that got into a wreck out there. What road was it? And we just need to go ahead and look at pushing that through. But Kemp's office did move it back from July to December, so it's there. There won't be legal until December first of two thousand and twenty-three. So, I actually, there's an ordinance in there, and I just gave the attorney to look at as a draft. I want y'all to read it and see if there's anything y'all want to add or change, and then I'll get it to him and we'll get it legalized.
So, we really don't have to worry about this until first of the year, December first?
No, but if they're riding them, we just need to make sure that everybody knows it don't go into effect till December first.
So, when are we gonna start letting them buy on December first?
I guess that's when the state's law goes until December first, twenty twenty-three. But we just need, I just want y'all to look at that draft and make sure that's everything that y'all were talking about, because I had also heard that the farmers have a, it's like an exemption if they're going from field to field, that they don't have to, is that correct, Layton? They don't have to have a tagger?
I think, I think that's right.
Make sure that we look at.
But that's only on county roads also.
Yes, so they cannot ride on state roads.
Correct.
So, look that over when you guys get a chance, and then if there's anything you want to add into, we'll add to it, and we'll get it to the attorney to find out.
We'll move on to new business. Ford Truck Financing, First State Bank, People's South Bank, pages seventeen through nineteen.
So, I sent an R F P out to three different banks that we normally use, also that we sent to. The only two that sent back was First State and Peoples, and this time Peoples was at five seven five, and First State was at five one oh with no fees. So, that's where I recommend we go with First State.
We have a motion to go ahead and finance with First State Bank.
I'll make a motion.
Well, second. All in favor? Motion carried. G S I Agreement Tax Commissioner, pages thirty-seven.
This is what we, this is what we do, Mrs. Jennifer, three or four times a year, is the software agreement that we just need to sign and get back to them. So, I just need a signature on that.
Okay, we have a motion. We're gonna sign it.
I'll make a motion.
All right, all in favor? Motion carried. Contribution Agreement, Georgia Association of Conservers, Service. Serviceteam Districts, pages twenty-eight through thirty-six.
So, that's Debbie Henry's, the employee that works for her. The county pays a percentage of that salary annually, and it's just up for renewal, so we just need to get that signed as well.
Okay, we have a motion on going in signing the paper.
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor? Motion carried. Taxation assessment budget contract.
Sir? All right, we, Mr. Worshley's aware that we're gonna be interviewing a candidate. Hopefully, but eventually we'll be our chief appraiser tomorrow morning. We've been advertising for well over twelve months, and we've not had one bite. We have called. There's just not anybody out there. The person we're hiring educationally can do the job, but they have to go through a process of Appraiser One, Appraiser Two, and Appraiser Three. And if we do something right now, we'll know by the end of the year whether they can make Appraiser One. But now, they can make it. It takes, it's a three-year process to become an Appraiser Three, according to the state. But this person has one year's experience working in a tax office, so that means they'll have to be employed by us by two years before they can become an official Appraiser Three. So, and that's what the state requires. Like I said, we have not had anybody even interested. We have called all around different counties. We've talked to different agencies, and well, right now, I don't even think, Baker County doesn't have anyone. Early County doesn't have anyone. And, you know, there may be somewhere down the road, we may have to do inner government agreement with Mr. Worshley, or two or three of us counties go together and get someone to be our chief appraiser. So, the contract we want to do with Cody, let's say hypothetically, this person can jump through all the hoops. You know, it can end, even though it's a year contract, it can end at any time. You know, we can walk away from the contract at any time. And then G M A S will continue to give us our support service. Can I add another thing on here? We have completed the county revale, which y'all are aware of. We were summoned by the state, Miss Jennifer got a letter too, that we had to raise the property values. And the issue is people are selling property in Miller County for more than it's worth, and that affects everybody's, and you have to do a dollar cost averaging compared to sales ratios. And ours had dropped too low. So, people who live in the city limits, we got a pretty good idea of what their properties were worth. Like where I live in Old Mill Acres, when you have a subdivision, you can live, lump all them houses together. So, except for the few subdivisions outside of the county, the property, not the homes, but the property went up about twenty percent. That's why we raised the property. We could have raised it up to thirty percent, but we're hoping that this will satisfy the state when they do our yearly review next year. And I will tell you, I'm not trying to milk you all, but we had to have this done by July the first of next year. And one reason I pushed to have it done this year, I didn't think it would be fair to raise property values in an election year. So, that's why we went ahead and did it this year. And Miss Jennifer can tell you, we also have received from the state a letter that we had to. And the counties around us, or even looks like they're gonna go up more than us. I saw a thing Friday on W A L B, Calhoun County. A lot of our things, we had some subdivisions wanting to come in, but also people are coming in and buying land for hunting purposes. And they don't care about the bags off, they just. So, hopefully, this will be our last year to have to do a contract where we pay Cody and the city pays Cody. And I will tell you, by the end of this year, we will know whether the new person's gonna work or not.
Also, did the governor re-estate the home here? Is that still this time?
Oh, it was reinstated, but let me tell you, that notice you got is not gonna be the real number. And Miss Jennifer, you know, we don't, we don't know, but if you remember, there were so, like, over a million dollars the governor's gonna give back. So, if your property value, if your tax bill was around two thousand dollars, you're probably, it's probably gonna be eighteen fifty. And I can't guarantee, because we don't have the numbers to put into the computer yet, but everybody that is a property owner is gonna get a rebound, rebate, and it's gonna be proportionate, you know. Not everybody's getting the, like, I'm not getting a hundred dollars, you getting a hundred. It's according to your property value. Everybody is getting a rebate in the state of Georgia, and it's gonna be a one-time rebate, only one time. Another thing, we just went to school, and I know Jennifer went before we did, that on your license plate deal, I know you got to get some things in line, but we have no idea really when it's gonna take effect, because the state is not ready. It's not that the counties are not ready, the state is not ready. And another thing, Miss Jennifer's gonna have issues with in the property accessory. If you buy that twenty-dollar tag, that does not exempt you from personal property taxes. You don't understand what I'm talking about. You'll still have to file the value of that thing as a personal property. It's just a tag for you, and as Brother Doug said, it's only county highways. You can't drive that vehicle on a state highway. It'd be legal.
Well, there's a contract between y'all and the city, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we don't take any action on this one?
We have to sign it, because you have to sign all county contracts.
And like I say, there's a potential we may not carry that contract through the next July. If this fellow works out, as he can take more and more responsibility, you know, Cody may be able to completely get out the picture. He will still yet be there to give us advice, but hopefully, we can get this thing resolved. And like I said, we have searched and searched and searched, and you just cannot find people who are wanting to go into this particular. And I will tell you that the schooling is tough. And like, when you all go to school, y'all get a certificate of attendance. We have to take tests. And when we did the assessment test, it is similar to calculus. We had to do interpolation tables and all that stuff, so, and you're not allowed to use a calculator. But all three of us are certified. Miss Bowen is fully certified now. She has, so she's up to date. When we conduct business, if you are challenged in a courtroom, we are all certified by the state.
Okay, do we have a motion to sign this contract?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All in favor? All right, motion carried to sign the contract.
Mr. Worshley, one other thing, the G M A S people are gonna come back and give us a final review of everything. Would you all, any of y'all like to attend that meeting, we can let y'all know. And if any of you, you're allowed to come and explain to you how, what is happening in southwest Georgia with property values.
So, we're having a lot, I mean, I know that I have, I'm gonna speak for myself. I've had a lot, a lot of people call and question everything. So, I just want to make sure that I'm clear when I'm trying to explain to everyone it's mandated by the state that we go up on property value. We have not increased the mill rate, but the property values have gone up. That is why the tax bill is up, correct?
What they do is you take the property values, what our property is valued at. Then they go by what things have been sold in the last three years. And let's say you have a house sitting here that's valued at a hundred thousand, and it sells for a hundred twenty-five. Then that sales ratio has to be eventually applied to all of our homes. And I will tell you, there are home, there's two homes that have sold in the last month at Old Mill Acres, and there was a lot more money paid for them than is on our tax books. So, but see, that won't help affect you all. That will just affect the thirteen residents of Old Mill Acres within the next three years. Just the thirteen of us, our tax property values are gonna have to go up.
But everyone needs to know we're gonna roll the mill rate back, you know, to offset what you see.
And I'll look around. I don't care if they're here or not, but let me just tell you, this is the second time we've done this, and you all have rolled back the mill rate. It's one interesting thing, when people come fussy to you all. It's one interesting thing, when people come fessing to you all, remind them that the school board has never rolled back millage, and the school taxes are more than your old taxes, if you look at that little card.
But I think school will roll back a ton.
School's gonna lower theirs at one point six mill this year.
But even if they roll it, uh, but you all are the ones that get the heat. But if everybody would read that whole thing, but it's, 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 uh, the state, and like I said, Jennifer received a letter, and didn't the county office receive a letter also? That we were out of compliance and we will have to raise our... But I know Jennifer always gets the letter.
Basically what this Reverend Winnie was saying, that the state has got a lot for each county, what they have to be at certain percentage of watch, which is around forty percent, and Miller County was running somewhere around thirty-two, thirty-three percent. So they had to get up to forty percent, or county was gonna be penalized.
Well, the penalty is you all cannot collect taxes.
Then they have to pay it's...
Yep, yep. You have to pay penalty. But, and, and our, our job is like yours, ninety percent of what we do, we have no control of it. It's state. And it's not fair.
Yeah, I think if they can't reach that value, y'all...
It is not fair.
I just think from, I, I just want to make sure that the citizens are educated about it, because I don't think people know, they don't understand it. And so I want people to understand it.
Yes.
You know, that's just my, and however we can, whatever we can do to make them understand it, I, I would like for us to do, so...
That it? Our internet security, Austin Lambert.
I just wanted to, um, take a minute and talk real quick. Um, I appreciate you guys, you know, giving me opportunity, um, getting that virus protection to help a lot. Um, I'm trying to step this up a little bit more, um, in the realm of security, IT security. We're kinda behind the curve. Um, you know, all these other counties, all these other governments, they have this really secure stuff, and we're kinda using, you know, bottom-of-the-barrel stuff that was, you know, the cheapest way to do it, you know? Um, one thing is our emails, you know, that, that server really wasn't designed for a government that we're using. Um, it's off-site, it's, it's, you know, remote hosted, that's what most people do nowadays. We pay another company to host it and they handle our emails. So I'm looking at possibly changing to a company that actually the IRS uses, a bunch of big government agencies use, it's got better security, it's, you know, it's designed for us, for a government. Um, it has spam filters where, you know, there's less likely somebody's gonna click something they shouldn't, and then, you know, we're getting a lawsuit or something like that, you know? So, that's the main thing, was emails, um, that I'm focusing on right now. And eventually, um, get something put in our network that I can monitor and control what happens inside this network, because I cannot tell you the amount of times that I've logged into a computer to fix it, and somebody's got Netflix and Hulu and all these other, you know, TV things pulled up. I gotta close fifteen tabs or some movies and TV before I can, you know, fix the computer. And after a while, you know, I mean, that's not a big deal, but if they're doing that, you know, they can go anywhere they want to right now on the network, and that's what scares me. I cannot control where they go, and I have to get a, I can get a firewall, it's a piece of equipment that I can basically block certain websites, I can close off certain sections to where, you know, they, they pretty much can only do work on a county network, and if they wanna watch TV, they gotta bring a phone or a tablet, or, you know, they're on internet. Um, I got a, I got a quote for one, I think it's gonna be like, the firewall's gonna be like five hundred or something like that, I don't think it's gonna be too bad, plus, um, installation and all, but I, I'll have to get the final quote for that. The one that's gonna hurt is the emails. It's about, I actually had two quotes, um, and they're, they're about five or six thousand a year for, for hosting seventy emails. Um, that's the minimum number we can get. We don't have, we have something around, I think we use sixty-three to sixty-five emails here at the county. Um, but yeah, it's about five or six thousand a year for that. We don't have to do it right now, but I just wanted to kinda talk to you guys about that and, you know, prep you guys, cause I mean, that, that is something that needs to happen. You know, we need to start, you know, kinda looking more IT security and getting everything, you know, locked down like a government network should be, cause right now, it's, it's the Wild West out here.
But we did some pretty near damage from before.
No, 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 no damage, I can tell anything like that, um, but we just, you know, it, it's, it's like a guy told me, you know, it's not, if you end up on the news, it's win, and I'm trying to push that win, you know, way down the road and at least say, well, we had this, we had that, when it does happen. The more we can get, the more we can secure, it's gonna look better on our end, in the long run. Um, and also had, you put that security policy, outside of security policy, basically what that is, um, it's pretty much every business, every big business government has it, G C I C, I think actually requires it. Um, I know the Sheriff's Department, I'm the one, they have one. I wrote one for Miller County, it's basically just a, a general outline. Okay, if I get a virus on my computer, what do I do? How, who do I call, who do I respond to? Um, and, and this just applies to county, this isn't elected officials, you know, we can't, we can't apply it to them, um, to constitutional officers, but this is just for us in the county. It's basically, it's almost like your policy rulebook, you know, it's gonna be, hopefully it's gonna be attached to that. Um, where basically, if something does happen, let's say somebody gets a virus or something, it does get through, they can say, okay, let me open my book, this is what I need to do, this is who I need to call, and we can get the ball rolling. And also legally, it looks better on our end, because we can say, well, yeah, it happened, but here's our protocol, here's how we fix it. And that, that of course, you know, that's free, that's just, you know, a matter of getting it accepted and pushed through there. But basically, it's just gonna apply to all county personnel, um, not elected, I put a clause in there for elected officials, you know, pretty much stating it's up to them, you know, however they respond, you know, we can't legally tell them how they should respond to an incident, um, within, you know, constitutional officer, but as far as I am aware of this, um, we can't. I would wanna get that, you know, pushed through, added to our employee handbook. And we'll look, we'll look a lot better, just having that alone will make us a lot, you know, a lot better legally and security wise.
And these prices are per year?
Uh, yeah, I'd be, um, let me go get those two quotes real quick, I got, um... So this is a, uh, this is actually a net third. I didn't realize that. And we may have to look into something else, looking at these prices again, they're, they're kinda insane. So, the one that I'm not even gonna go with is fourteen thousand for a net third, that's, that's untouchable. Um, the other one I have is nine thousand. That's nine thousand dollars, and that's, you know, that's up there, but it's, I was assured that's pretty much top of the line. That's what a lot of people use, a lot of governments, a lot of big businesses use this, um, it's got a lot of security features in it. Um, you know, I can always get more, um, there's other people out there, these are your two big contenders, um, but I'm sure they're, you know, there's other things we could probably go with, cause I know that, uh, that nine thousand dollars on a net third kinda hurts. It hurt me when he sent it to me. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much that, though. Um, I just wanted to talk to you guys, you know, about that, cause that's been really bothering me here lately, you know? I look at all these other people, we're kinda, you know, we're kinda behind the curve on security.
So a hundred and nine thousand, what was the other one?
Fourteen?
Fourteen, five, thirty-five. That comes with, um, that's Microsoft, I think it comes with like some Office stuff or stuff like that, but you know, the main thing with email. The other one's under Gmail, but it's like a government, Google Mail, it's not, you're not gonna have a at gmail dot com, I mean, it's gonna be at government. And it comes with some little Google stuff as well, I think, but the main draw point is the, is the security. But yeah, I mean, I'm not asking you guys to make a decision on that tonight, that's a lie to just bring forward to you. Um, and like I said, I can always get some more prices, but these are our two, these were the two best ones. So, I just wanted to talk to you guys and give that to you.
A lot of time, you get what you pay for.
Yeah, yeah, I learned that in our...
All right, we appreciate it, Austin.
All right, man, thank you guys for...
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for him? Our departments, County Road List, Doug Coffey.
So basically all this is, is I've had, Ms. Christine had asked, and then Layden had asked, you know, which, or actually Jeff, which counties are, are considered a, an official road in which we scrape, so I got with Andy and Shelley, and they actually sent us that list. That way, if y'all have that list and somebody calls y'all, y'all will be able to look and say, hey, yes, this is an official road.
That's our, that's our list that comes from the state.
The one with the...
That's, that's what they give you, grant money, and all that on right there.
This is roads of trade.
Those are your legal county road.
Yep.
Just cause a road has a name does not mean...
That's this, that's this right here.
That's the blue, the one with the blue hitting.
One of these right here that says roads divided by motor grader.
Yes, those are what they actually created.
Yeah, it should be, but they should have been a list, just a straight list.
It is.
They is, they is.
Okay. And, and those are how we got it busted up right now by motor grader, um...
Oh, so one oh one's doing those roads, and one oh two's doing those roads?
Yeah, yeah, pretty, pretty much, now, you know, I mean, that's, that's on a good normal day, but, you know, we pulled off to do something, we may have to run, you know, just run two or, but on normal circumstances, that's try, that's pretty much how we try to run it right there.
So we got two hundred and sixty-five acres of dirt road, more than that?
Miles.
Miles, what did I say?
Yeah, acres. You still farming later?
Still farming, miles, two hundred and sixty-five miles.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty close right there. A- actually, we have a little bit more than that, but the state swapped over and they do not measure things by road anymore, they measure it by the computer. And it really hurt Miller County, because we lost about twenty-five or thirty miles in there by them changing the way that they operate.
And we scrape the dirt roads in the city limits also?
Uh, yes, we do, you know, we don't scrape them pretty much every time we go around, but we do hit them.
We do that for free?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kinda the board always wanted it done, but...
Just ask a question.
We, we help each other, I mean, it's not a, it's...
I understand.
We work with them and they work with us, I mean, we...
I bet Nikki didn't know that, so that's why I was asking.
Well, I don't think, I, I would be, I'd be pushed to say if they had five or six miles of road, I mean, it's not, it's not killing us to do.
Oh, I know, that's, yeah, just a question.
In your district, being, we talking about scraping, your district, Newberry Chambers and Union Church, we gonna start hitting them by sections, and we gonna ditch them just as long as we can hold out, that it don't get too sandy on us. I mean, it's, you get a rain, you got a little too much moisture, two or three days, you don't, it's kinda like farming, it'll get too dry or hard or whatever, but those roads right there have just got extremely flat, I put a sidearm mower down it, you know, a few weeks ago, we got the weeds cut down, we got it cut back fairly good. We are ditching behind the limb cutter, every time he gets a road cut, we are ditching those roads, but those, they need some work done on them, and the, and the sidearm cutter's got them kinda reasonably where we can work on them. Those, those roads need some attention, and we gonna try to catch them a section at a time. We might have to catch a section and blade, catch a section, but we gonna try to hit those two roads, which, they working on the other roads too as we go, and ditched some places on them, but those two roads are very long roads. And Newberry Chambers, I guess, is about the longest dirt road in the county. It takes us about two hours or more to blade, i- if they bladed in two hours. But we gonna start working on it, we're supposed to go to call them, you'll know that, we, we starting to work on them. They been knocking some grass off, and it looks a little rough right now, they been pushing it off, and what we gonna do is kinda rough that grass up, and then when they come back, they'll catch that grass, you know, it'll die some and then spread it, cause they been supposed to calling me like, hey, what y'all do, you know? But we kinda roughing that grass up a little, and then we gonna let it die out somewhere, it won't be so hard to work within the road. So it may take us a little while to do it, but we gonna be working on them two roads, cause they are just staying underwater.
Y'all did a good job on lane.
Yeah, we just cut lane and alleys, and we didn't get right to it, but we finally got back in there and ditched it, I hadn't seen it, but I feel like the boys did a good job on it. The excavator, I got a couple of days break with it, so I'll be helping in the park for a little bit. We got a locate, we waiting on a locate on Griffin Sherfield, we gonna get some pipes in Griffin Sherfield. And then we get, this not happening today, but we gotta look at both of y'all's Glass Road and Newberry Chambers, those pipes are gonna have to be replaced. There's no ifs, no ands, buts, but, I mean, they just, either we gotta just, we gotta replace, they gotta be replaced. I mean, ain't no taking them out, filling it up with dirt, we can't leave them like they are. They just gone, Layden, I think has seen that personally, and I know Allen has seen Glass Road, those two projects gotta be done, and they gonna be expensive. Pipe's not gonna be cheap to do.
Did you have a chance to go to Brian's room?
Uh, we already done, we had already done it, I think, um, at the end of last week. I asked him about it this morning, and I think he called it the end of the week, Jeff, ditching right there at Miss, um...
Miss Carolyn.
Miss Carolyn Worshley's house.
I went out Friday and it hadn't been done.
Hadn't been done Friday? Well, I'll find out, cause I asked him about that this morning. Now, the guy's a new motor grader operator, he might have hit the wrong spot, but I'll find out about it.
And that could be possible, but he's right in front of her house.
Yeah, we usually try to keep that ditch, but, you know, we, we been clipping shoulders and moving around, fixing some things for school buses, so I've had the motor grader guys kinda stirred up, not been the regular guy kinda going through that, but I'll, I'll definitely check on that. Be honest, that needs a pipe right there, they cleaned up that fence road, you know, across the road from her house and all that water dumps, and there's really nowhere for it to go.
It's like the pipe, we need to go right in front of her house.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that's where the water comes across the road at. It really needs a pipe put in it right there, if you wanna know the truth. And that, that's a whole nother story, but if y'all wanna look at, let's buy a few pieces of small pipe, we'll start catching a few of those small areas.
Yeah, I mean, it's a continuous problem, I know, we need a pipe.
We usually try to keep it ditched and keep it deep, and it's very, it ain't very rare, but it usually don't get up, cause a lot of problems, but when the ditches get full, and they bad about dishing that ditch in right there.
I believe if we dig on both sides there and put a pipe in, on that north side.
Yeah, we dig, we dig on both sides, and we go around, in the back, we go around the corner too. But I'll, I'll double check that, but I asked, I brought that up this morning, when we all sit down and got where we was all going, I, when they went back to blading, I brought that up, that they need to go and catch that, so...
Y'all wanna go and authorize Andy to get some more pipe? Andy's not gonna throw money away, he know what he needs.
Well, the twenty-four about thirties is just a common pipe, I mean, you could need one at any given time, you could have one collapse, and I got a couple that I got, but they're, you know, I designated them to that Griffin Sherfield when we bought them, and I might have one extra pipe on the yard, but most time, we've been just buying pipe kinda as we come up on a project. And something we need to be thinking about in Jeff's district is when this project on ninety-one gets finished, you know, we gonna have to start looking downhill from that.
Them engineers told me it wasn't gonna be a problem.
How?
Them engineers told me it wasn't gonna be a problem.
That D O T's told me a lot of things over the years, Layden. There may be a sore subject with Jeff.
No, that's good. Do we need to vote on the pipe buy?
Go ahead and make a motion, go ahead, let Andy know what the pipe...
I make a motion, I mean, it's a continuous problem, it's fixed, it's on the county where I was talking.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's carried, Andy, go order your pipe.
I, what kinda money y'all, y'all wanna do, let's do about five thousand dollars a pipe, that's five or six pipes. I think the last time Shelley priced them, they had done, got up to about...
About eight hundred dollars a piece or something like that?
Yeah, about thousand, eight hundred or something like that, I mean, I'm not gonna quote it, cause that price changes, but that's, you'll do five or six pipes for now?
Ever, whatever, how many projects have you got that...
Ever, what, whatever, how many projects have you got that need?
Well, I got, I got, we gonna have to just buy the pipe to do these projects for Laden and Allen's district, and those are a lot bigger pipes. But it wouldn't hurt.
What you talking about, about twenty-four inch pipe, is that what you talking about buying?
Yeah, just twenty-four by thirties is a standard go across the road, dirt road pipe.
Metal pipe?
Yeah, they may be an exception sometime where we have to cut a little piece and add on to it, but, you know, we get bands and we'll take one piece of pipe and kind of cut it up if we need to. You know, we got thirty-five foot or whatever, we, we make it work, but a standard pipe that we buy to go across the road is thirty foot.
Well, you get through with them, come back and look, look at some more.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I mean, five receipts, I mean, we got work stacked up to our eyeballs right now, so.
I'm just surprised to see what, you know, I mean, they delivering it to you, ain't they?
Yeah, 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 they are delivering.
I mean, once you get us some, get, give Doug like, like, I know you, the more you buy, the cheaper it is, they ain't gonna spoil.
Y'all wanna throw one of them projects in there, we get it, we get us a pipe to use and.
Well, I mean, like I said, I mean, have you got any pipe on hand?
I got what I'm gonna put on Griffin Sherfield.
But I'm talking about, you ain't got any spare though, one thing?
No, I might have, well, if I needed to, I'd run out there and get one of them and replace it, but when I go out there and do Griffin Sherfield, we gonna be.
No, I would leave what you got for Griffin Sherfield there for that project.
Yeah, but I'm saying if I had an emergency tonight, you know, I'd run out there and get one.
Get some prices up and let us, and he'll text us and do, we'll do our thing and.
That, that'd be great.
Five or six is fine, but we might, you know, if they, if there's a big discount on. Might get more.
I, we get a, we get a government discount, and it don't matter if we buy ten truckloads or one truckload, it's that's the government discount you gonna get. They sell it to us by the foot, so I mean, it don't matter, if we buy a full semi loader or if I buy one pipe, it's gonna be.
The same thing.
The same thing, you know, it's gonna be twenty fours is a certain price, thirty sixes and on up, you know, it just keep.
They gonna give you delivery, I mean, they chart, they putting a delivery fee on that thing too, I mean.
No, not, not, they haven't been on us, so they, they work pretty well with us on that.
Let's just get some prices and let's just.
I'll do it, and I'll try to work in one of them projects and we'll see what we can work out a semi load, you know, with that, see what it comes up to, if that's alright with Jeff.
You'll always use it, not letting it say it won't.
Oh, I.
Yeah, it ain't gonna spoil.
Like the project we was doing, talking about it, Miss Carolyn Wersley, a lot of times when, you know, I got the guys drunk out or something, lots of times I go do that by myself. Um, I'll let Shelley start hauling the dirt and she'll just be stacking the dirt up in the road and I'll take the excavator and I'll do the digging, you know, I'll do all that, get pipe in, and usually she'll have me enough dirt hauled at a, a single pipe like that, I I can catch a few minutes by myself and go do that with, with her help. So, if we got the pipe, there is a lot of places, um, McClendon Road, we got a blowout right there at Todd and McClendon, that, that needs taken up and swapping. There's a couple of places that, yes, we do need it, and it'd be great.
What about that, what about that eight inch pipe or whatever that is right there on, is that McClendon Road?
Yeah, down there at the hog pen.
Yeah.
Um, but I put in a bigger pipe there.
Oh, is it bigger?
I put in a, a full blown sewage pipe there.
Oh, is it right there, okay, alright.
Yeah, that was a get me by over nine.
I remember that eight inch.
Hey, it drained water.
Yeah, yeah.
I built a burn side to pond and put an eight inch pipe across the road and it kept a big giant mud hole from being there and everybody went through, so don't, don't knock a little lady. But I went back and put in and built that road up some right there at the hog pen, but, um.
Get a price on it, or like you say, on a bunch of them pipes.
There, there's, there's a good many spots that we need to start fixing some of the blowouts that we got, um, let me ask y'all this, I, I've done it one time before and then they didn't wanna do it again. I stepped up in gauges of steel, and the pipe is a little more expensive, but this stuff is stepped up out there too, you got these big spreaders that run on it, you got big peanut figures, cotton figures, semis running up and down it, and we getting a lot of pop pipes from heavy loads, and one, one thing is a big load is, and it's over in Laden's mostly, is these things that the cow people use, them tubs where they put a roll of hay in it and then feed and all in it, that thing right there is just astronomically heavy. And when they run across them pipes, if it gets wet and they gonna feed cows into wet and that dirt gets soaked around that pipe, when it pops it, that pipe is corrugated together in a seam and it'll just pop that seam and there's a wreck piece pipe, you know, so do y'all wanna look at that price? Just step up in a ga- in gauges.
We can look at it, but as long as there's enough dirt on it, you, you ain't never.
Ah, that's our problem, Laden, you gotta have a little over two foot, you know, to make it be half right. Keeping two foot of dirt over some of these pipes, which now I have, but like this one on Griffin Sherfield, we gonna set the pipe on the dirt road and we gonna build a road up four or five foot, and you got to do it for a long stretch, and that's kind of how I've been doing them, and I've been trying to build the road up like we did on McClendon there, but it still washes out pretty bad right there, but we hadn't had no problems with it. But it's taking, it takes a lot of time to go in there and a lot of dirt hauling, but, you know, there's no need to do it if you're not gonna do it right.
I'd get a price on it, I'm not letting you backfill it, Roger, it'll take.
Yeah, well.
It'll handle it.
It, it, it depends on what kind of dirt you're using too, I mean, that, if you can get some good, our problem is our clay's not that well, it's not good sandy clay, if we haul clay in there and put it in there, we try to blend that top, you know, to keep folks driving on it, but if it gets washed down, you can't drive on that clay, it's a beast of sleep. Now, if it ever hardens up, you won't ever have a problem with the pipe, because the excavator can't dig it back up, but it's hard to keep that sand on that top layer of it, when we get these big rains, it goes to washing it down to the hard, and then you got just straight slick dirt. And all our dirt's got gummy in it, it's, it's red clay with gummy in it, it makes a good road bed if you can ever blend the top, you know? But we, we do the best we can with it. We'll look at it if it's, if it's just extremely amount more, you know, we just go the way we been going. We hadn't had any problems lately, but we've been taking a lot more time and building the roads up a lot harder than just putting in a piece of pipe too. Just takes a little more time, a little more dirt, and when we do it, you naturally gonna hear we robbing dirt from somewhere. And y'all, y'all the ones gonna hear it, because they gonna call y'all and say, hey, they don't hear robbing my dirt road, but that's part of it, we robbed one lane of the road the other day.
Most time it's my road, seem like.
Huh?
Most times they like one of my roads that y'all are robbing.
Well, we used it back on, on your road, it just wasn't the same road.
Yeah. We might could get it with the clipping, if we still clipping.
What was that, Jeff?
If we still clipping, we can get the dirt from there.
I, yeah, it, it's gonna have a lot of grass in it, we gonna have to, we gonna have to clip that, pull it in the road and get it up, and that's the best way to do it, but right now, just can't turn a loose all them people, I mean, it, you running four dump trucks and two machines, that's six people and I only got nine, so I mean, there's no way I can do the work out of the county and do that, and all, the roads need clipping, I agree, um, and we'll work a little better with me and the group that I got, if we can hold off till it, a frost falls, I won't be mowing side the road, that'll turn a loose a few people and the grass won't be so bad in the dirt that we pull. But I, I agree, I've, I've wanted to do it for years, but some people didn't want to, to show this clip, but.
Well, that's what safety has, I mean, we don't even know what was standing in the road when it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it needs to be done, but right now, just, I, I can't blade roads, I can't limb cut, I can't mow side the road, and I can't do that all at the same time.
Can you reach out for some help?
Yeah, we, we talked today, he did, he said he did, he's got one open, so we're gonna try to find him some.
I mean, I got one, I only got one open, but still nine, ten people can't, they can't do all the bases, I mean, I've only been running one mowing truck beside the highway. And that's, that's not near enough to stay up with mowing side the highway.
Pretty, pretty square miles of county. Each one of them guys down there, nine employees responsible, a little over thirty square miles.
We almost covering a thousand miles of road, because you work on both sides of the road, if you limb cutting, you got to cut both sides, if you blade a road, you got two sides. I mean, we right, we, we not quite at a thousand, but we not very far from it. When the guys mow, when they mow around the county, they have mowed twelve hundred miles, if you sat down and figure up the trips, if it takes three trips on this side of the road and three trips on this side of the road, that mile, that road's ten mile long, that's sixty miles. If you sat down and figure up the mileage, when they have mowed, starting at the shop and mowed all the way around the county and get back to the shop, they have mowed right at twelve hundred miles every trip that they mowed, and that's a lot of mow. And the limb cutter's same way, he's running, Laden said that, things that we had, two hundred and sixty-five miles, we, when it was done by measuring roads, we had about two hundred and seventy-six miles, and if you double that, that's what you covering on dirt roads, and then you got two hundred and seventy some, seventy-two miles, I think I asked for. Um, so, I mean, that's, and you double that or triple it or whatever you doing on it, I mean, that's a lot of miles of road for nine men to cover, y'all. I mean, most, most counties our size is running anywhere from fifteen to twenty men, and, and these boys, they, they go in the back for you, they roll out there every morning. Half of them's there working on their motor grader before they get clocked in, or they getting their truck gassed up before they even clock in, these boys are there. I mean, they, they rolling, they put out coal patch all day and heat today, they didn't back up not one time, I mean, these guys are, they there, they're just not enough of us.
And y'all watch your heat out there now.
Yeah, I mean, we, we carried water keys and of all, all days, our ice maker was, that lightning we got Thursday afternoon, it kind of messed with it some, but I got it back to running and then we got somebody to look at it too, to make sure it was gonna be running. And I, I stressed that to them this morning to make sure, if they didn't have a way to carry water, let me know and we'd have a way for them to have water. But I mean, it, it's just hot, but we got work to do.
Well, we appreciate everything y'all do down there, is there anything else you?
I, I guess we need to talk about truck, because the truck still ain't long enough for me to put in bed, I got some, I don't, I mean, I don't understand it, but anyway, I can't use the bed that I got at the shop for the dual wheel truck that we getting from the Ford.
Is this the one that we had previously discussed, I guess, for the?
Yeah, it, it still ain't long enough. I mean, it just ain't long enough, I don't know what they don't understand about it, I mean, I, I best thing to do is just put a service body on the truck and you'll have more room, because a sign post is ten foot long. And with a service body, if you wanna put an air compressor, you mount it on the side, you know, we gonna have to put a diesel tank in the back of it, because this don't go to, you know, be out there at night, or it can be out there servicing up the excavator or, I mean, we gonna, gonna have to put stuff in it, but if you go to stacking everything in the back of the truck or on a flatbed, it's just gonna stack up, and you can't even put a sign post on it hardly. So I'd say the best thing to do is get a service body, you'll have a place to put all these chainsaws, keep your oil and stuff out of the rain, your tools.
When you say service body, you talking about one with the tool boxes on it?
Yeah, just a service body, just a straight service body. And then it's got a platform up top, if you want an air compressor, you can bolt it up on top.
You gonna put an air compressor on it?
I got one, Laden, I, yeah, you know, I mean, I wasn't just, I'd really like for it to have one, an air compressor with a generator on it, because we work on them pipes. You know, a lot of times you need, you need your drills, you need your grinders and stuff like that, because a lot of pipes we repair. When you bust a pipe, we go to them and try to repair them a lot, you know, and gets them down, some of them I've got by, for years with a patch on it, but I'd like to have one, we, I got two. The mowing guys has got one with a generator, you know, it's an air compressor generator, they sharpen their blades. The service truck has a air compressor with a generator for the same reason, sometime we need lights out there when we get in a bind at night, and then we got it where we got drop cords, drills, grinders, whatever in it, because we had, sometime you had to work on these stuff side of the road.
You thought about buying power inverters and putting in them?
No, it's got, um, John Deere sells a air compressor.
Power inverter's way cheaper though. Power inverter, way cheaper.
Well, yeah, I guess now, y'all.
And it don't run no gas, because you plug it to your battery on your truck.
I don't know, the truck might have one inside that'll run one ten, but.
It won't run, it won't run, but you can buy one at Harbor Freight that will, for a couple hundred bucks, that will run anything you got.
You can send me that and we'll look at it, I'm old school, I like fire up my air compressor and plug it.
Oh, it's just like your house, you just gonna plug it up and flip the switch on and go.
Well, some of these new trucks have got it, I guess, where you can just plug it into the back of them, but I mean.
That's what, that's what we've all went to on, on the farm, is, is that.
But, um, anyway, it needs a power source and yes, the air compressor would be nice on it, because I mean, we going, we gonna use it everywhere. You know, if you going to the excavator, whatever, a lot of times you got to blow it out, or you have a flat tire on tractor, whatever, but we'll work that out later, let, let's get a bed on first.
Right, right.
And, and I do have an old air compressor, but.
Well, we go ahead and cross up these, now then with the, yeah, just go ahead and.
Y'all got some prices on the bed?
I got one price and that's all I've had time to fool with, and this is from Albany Transport, and that's usually every bed we got, except for the one I was gonna put on this truck, it's coming from them.
And that's the one.
There's some extra numbers down there, it depends on, they may have to add something when they put it on the truck, but the top price is basically the, the price for the bed.
That's the same one for the road, so I'd let Andy go ahead.
I know it's gonna be, I already have an idea. I would, I would call Smith Build over there, is that what, what's the name of that, and then?
Sylvester.
It's Sylvester.
You got, um, Park Building, Sylvester, that's who built the bed that I wanted to put on this truck.
I'd get a price from them.
Hadn't had time to fool with it, if y'all want to truth, I hadn't had time to fool with it.
Doug, so, call, Doug loves to call, get a price from Park.
Doug has been working at the park.
At the park, I've been working at the park.
But, um.
We're gonna promote it. We're gonna promote it.
It's gonna be around that price right.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just get another price, so.
I will, I mean, it's not something we got to do today, like, we hadn't even got a truck yet.
What are them prong horns, are they about the same, they about nine thousand?
Yeah, they about the same. If we go with it, the only thing I don't like about them is, like, my truck is, and I, I like it, for me walking up to it and working on it, as far as what I do, I like my ball in the back full of the goose neck trailer, the only thing I don't like is when you put that ball in there, I got, I got my, I couldn't put a very big fuel tank. My air compressor's stacked up on top of my fuel tank, because it only has about this much room before it gets to that ball. Now, it'd be nice if truck could pull the goose neck trailer, but I'm looking for room right now, you know, being able to to actually get some service out of the truck, the reason I wanted a service body is because of that. That truck will have two chainsaws in it all the time, I mean, there's gonna be some things in it that will be in it all the time and they'll be out of the weather, they won't be sliding off of the flatbed, they'll be, and it'll be where if you need to, you can lock it up. But now, we'll look at the prong horn too.
Get some more prices on it.
Yeah.
Get some more prices there, man.
It's nothing that we got to do today, we hadn't even got trucks, so I mean, it's not an issue, but I just wanted to kind of make y'all aware that that one is not long enough and why, I don't, I mean, I, I don't understand it, but it is what it is.
Well, that other bed, what, twenty years old or something like that?
Yeah, Laden, you didn't have to throw out it, I'm getting, no, yeah, it's about sixteen, seventeen years old, I got it when I come here.
Got anything else you got in?
One more little fact I'm gonna throw out there to you. I don't know exactly how long I've been here, it's been sixteen, seventeen years, but, um, if y'all don't know it, you are about halfway on your pavement. When I come here, they was paving nine tenths of a mile a year, and in seventeen years, we've rolled out with a lot of begging for money, a lot of blood, sweat and tears, but right now, we are pretty close to about halfway resurfacing all highways in Miller County. And I really don't think that's too bad. And I don't have but one regret, and that's Greaves Lucille, and I did, I did surface treatment on it, because it was coming slam apart and I could pay all I needed to pay for the money I had, and I run surface treatment on it, and then I regret it today, but other than that, that's the only regret I got with it. Um, but right now, we are right at halfway, halfway done paving our roads, and I really don't think that's too bad for sixteen, seventeen years, that we have got enough grant money that we've only paid thirty percent of the money. And like I said, when I come here, which Allen can tell you, we was, we was putting a patch on the road, we wasn't paving nothing. We was just going finding a bad spot and paving nine tenths of a mile on a patch. And we started, when I come, I got on the phone and went razzling everybody's cages, got thrown out of a few meetings every now and then. But we've got enough grant money that the county's only paid for thirty percent, and we, we halfway, and that's.
That is good.
Appreciate it. Keep it up, keep it.
We'll go ahead and move on with Paul, I see you out there, you got anything to say?
Uh, well, I'm really just listening, uh, Chairman, I will comment that the, uh, I did have a conversation with Rhonda Gordon with, uh, Golden Triangle, she's working on getting that money from the US Department of Labor of the training for the, uh, motor grader operators, there's gonna be a simulator that they gonna put on a trailer and then take them around to different counties, hopefully that'll be in, I mean, she's, uh, going through the process of paperwork to get it actually in hand, uh, I need to work with Doug on the, uh, nine one one consoles, do any update on that, Doug?
Yes, I just got approved last week. FEMA actually approved it, but GMA said hold on until they notify us, so. It has been approved higher up. We just gotta go back down the ladder.
So you, you, uh, crossed that bridge.
Yes, and now we just gotta wait for GMA to tell us how to get the money.
Okay, and, and one more thing, I did have a conversation with Suzanne Angel at the Regional Commission about the police radio situation. And that's, uh, been a little, uh, bumpy, uh, we had hoped to, uh, you know, do better on that, but there's a million, there's three point nine million dollars that the commission got up for the Regional Commission to work on police radios. Uh, she's working on, she's hired a consultant, uh, to, that, that knows about all these different police radios to try to work on some plans, to work, uh, county to county, in, in some cases where maybe two counties will share a tower, ribbon everybody to have, you know, their own towers and, and it'd be more efficient if they could, if you could share towers and have some kind of intergovernmental agreement that would, uh, allow that and maybe split costs or something like that. So, uh, but she's working on some ways to shave some points and get some, uh, more back to, uh, try to get that money.
I think we have a meet, uh, she called it for all the representatives of each county. I think it's the end of the month. We're gonna be.
I figure I need to talk about that meeting.
Okay.
I'll thank you. Okay, that, that's all I got.
Appreciate it, Paul. Everybody else.
Y'all helping with the simulator. That, 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 that's big money right there.
Everybody else got anything? All right, we need a motion to adjourn here.
I'll make it. I'll say.
Hold on a favor?
We did a motion for Laden.